We're closing the regular meetings for work, Coral.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Christopher Warren.
Here.
Christopher Mabry.
Here.
Christopher Newman.
Please stand and join us in the closing.
The closing of the United States of America in the United States of America. And we are calling for one nation under God invisible with everything just as horrible.
We have any public comments from the public? We don't have any public here tonight, so. Braveheart Children's Advocacy Center.
I have no show.
No show? Okay. Clint, would you like to come up and introduce Chris?
Yeah. I'm Clint Querom, Street Department Superintendent.
I'll switch the mics forward.
You can't hear me?
No.
You've got to pick it up and then...
There you go.
Recording. I had contacted Chris Novak. He's our mosquito consultant to see if he'd be willing to present a little PowerPoint for, you know, 10 minutes, 10, 15 minutes on the advantages, disadvantages of mosquito, adulticide within our community. And while he's here, he accepts it. And so go ahead and present this. And I do believe that we will, we will learn some positive features onto why we should be adulticide within our community. So with that, this is Chris Novak with Clark Mosquito.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me. I'm going to see if this projector can just turn on here. I don't know, I'm not blind here.
Chris, can you get my mic? Just pull that out.
Oh, sure. What I put together here is maybe one one-hundredth of what Clint normally sees at a Clark workshop. Our Clark workshops every year are about four hours long, a half day, where we invite all the public. And next year, of course, you're all invited to attend one. Basically gives us an overview of all the things mosquito, whether it's the diseases of hearing, the lifecycle, reviews of the mosquito control efforts that we're doing and the new technologies. So if you'd like to come and come with Clint next year to the workshop, we'd love to have you as a guest. I put together some information here that I think is important to know, not only about the mosquito control efforts that we're doing here in Princeton, but to also answer some of the questions that come up, because I know people sometimes ask about the safety of mosquito control spray. And we'll talk about that just a bit, too. First, I want to introduce you to a video that was put together by a group, independent group, about the importance of mosquito control in general.
Fever's so nasty. I think she feels like bones are breaking. Dengue fever has never been a big issue in the United States, except the mosquito carry illness showed up last year and it's not again this year.
Now, first, some of the cases of Dengue fever here in Miami-Dade County.
There are a lot of scary words up there. Dengue, red-fellish fever, and yellow fever. A lot of those diseases won't be diseases we have to worry about here in the Midwest, but we do have some endemic mosquito diseases to our region that are really important to know a lot about. The world's deadliest animal is not any one of the things you see up here. It's not hippopotamus, of course, it's not the tapeworm. The world's deadliest animal, well, besides us, of course, we kill each other at 475,000 people per year, but the mosquito kills, depending on who you talk to, as many as a million people per year. So it's still the deadliest creature on earth. We've been hearing a lot this year about what we call the Zika virus, the Zika virus syndrome. We're going to talk a little bit about the probability or possibility of Zika entering our Midwest region right now, which is a very, very small probability. But we'll talk more about those diseases. But the first ones we really need to talk about are the ones that are really endemic to our region, and those are West Nile virus, which, as you saw from the map, just scattered across our country and basically had the first huge outbreak of it in 2003 and 2004. But we've had re-outbreaks in Dallas, Texas in 2005, excuse me, 2015. So those diseases, and then Eastern equine encephalitis, St. Louis encephalitis, killed a 16-year-old boy in Fort Wayne, Indiana a few years ago. That was a reemergence of an existing disease. We still have those diseases, and of course, heartworm disease for our pets. So we still have, there are some very deadly diseases that are endemic to the region. These diseases are what we call arboviruses, and that's needing a host. We have to have the birds. Remember, we had testing for birds for West Nile virus for a long time? Well, whether that be a, the vector would be a bird or a small mammal, those amplifiers amplify the disease, and then when they bite a human being, it's called a dead-end host. West Nile virus, and Eastern equine, and all those diseases that we just talked about, those diseases end with the person. Once a person gets that disease, it can't be amplified or transmitted by the mosquito to another person. So that makes these diseases pretty darn scary. Now, we've all been eradicated malaria from the United States, but Dengue in Florida was pretty scary a few years ago. Chicken gunia in the entire South region, all of our South American countries, had big outbreaks of chicken gunia, and there were 12 cases in Florida in 2012. And then, of course, Zika virus is a virus that is something that's upon us. We have to have a mosquito vector in order to carry the disease. And the species that carries all of these mosquitoes, we'll talk about in a second, isn't here in Illinois yet. It's something we should prepare for, it's something that could come here. So it's something to be concerned with, but as of now, the 80's albopictus and 80's egyptian mosquitoes are not prevalent here in Princeton. Last year, we had 1,713 positive mosquito pools of West Nile virus. We had some right here in this county. Was it last week or last month? You said, Clint, we had a positive? 51 positive birds and 72 human cases. And we had seven people die of West Nile virus just last year in Illinois alone. Nationwide, last year, we had 2,060 human cases and 119 human deaths. So although Zika is making the news right now because it's a big story, for here, for us here in the Midwest, it's still West Nile virus. It's still an endemic disease, West Nile virus, that we're concerned with. That brings up a really important question about Zika. You know, what is the common element in the Zika virus and Dengue and chicken gunia? It's this little guy right here. It used to be called the yellow fever mosquito, but I think we should rename it, because with all those other diseases that it carries, and chicken gunia and Zika being something to be really concerned with, the yellow fever mosquito should probably be renamed. Here's the regions, though, that it encompasses. The 80's egyptian mosquito in the United States only comes up to see most southern states that are in the dark there. The 80's albopictus mosquito, however, has also been shown to be able to transmit Zika virus. And those coverage areas, as you can see, come right up through central Illinois, and they're growing. As global warming increases, our climate change and our globalization of our society is going to permit us to have disease where we've never had it before. So even though right now Zika is not our biggest concern, West Nile virus is, it's something that we really think should be concerning, like something to be a concern for future situations. So when people ask, and they do ask me often, should we worry about a particular disease? We really shouldn't worry about the disease. We should worry about the mosquito. Because in summary, these are all the diseases that the mosquitoes carry. Those first four endemic to our region. We have them here now. The other four could come here and could be a problem for us in the future or return to Princeton. Now, what's Clint doing out there and the gang that are all category eight mosquito control certified specialists toward the state of Illinois? Well, we do all kinds of things. We take education courses like the Clark workshops. We survey and we map the areas that we know where mosquitoes are breeding. We do surveillance, we trap or we dip to see where mosquito larvae might be breeding. And then we do larval controls. You can see, one of the big things at Clark now, because of our green footprint, because we're reducing our carbon footprint at Clark, a lot of the treatments that we're doing for larvaicide now are done with bicycles or without combustible vehicles. But one of the things that's most important and is a very important facet of the integrated mosquito management program that we preach at Clark, is the adult control. Adult control is very important, because for every female mosquito we take out of the air, remember, the female mosquito is the only one that carries eggs and the only one that can lay eggs and make more mosquitoes. The female mosquito taken out of the air could subsequently take out thousands of mosquito populations. So when we spray for mosquitoes, every female mosquito taken out of the air takes, reduces that population greatly. And that's the fastest and most economical way to do it. Now, adult control ULV, some of us, I won't say who in this room, I know I was one of the guys, that was dumb enough back in my childhood to run around, buy the mosquito truck back in the 1960's and 70's, when they were spraying things like DDT and malathion, and they used thermal foggy, they actually lit the chemicals on fire in order to kill mosquitoes. Sometimes gallons and gallons per acre were out there. We've come a long way since then. And just for the fun of it, another, believe it or not, actual promotional video, special treatments for that special party when they were using DDT at picnics and pool parties to control mosquitoes. And we've come a heck of a long way since then. Today's ULV chemicals are called ultra-low volume chemicals. Ultra-low volume means that often less than there's an ounce of acre that goes over acre of land. But we're doing here in Princeton today, using ultra-low volume fogs, cold aerosol fogs, that take an ounce of chemical and they spray it over an acre of land. We can add active ingredients in these chemicals that are as low as 2%. So they're very, very safe. We have 17 different formulations and five different active ingredients available right now to us in the mosquito industry, and we've decided on one here for Princeton that's working very, very well and is being very effective for us. We have pyretrins, natural pyretrins available to us, we have synthetics, and we have organo-phosphates. But the one we chose for Princeton is called Aqua Duett. And Aqua Duett has a couple of ingredients, and the reason there's two ingredients in this chemical is very important. The first ingredient, or sumetrin, kills the mosquito, but we've added another ingredient there called preletrin, and that excites the mosquito. We call it the benign agitation that gets the mosquitoes moving. So even the mosquitoes that are hiding, we normally couldn't get back in the old days, we can now get those mosquitoes that are hiding out of their resting places and kill more and more mosquitoes with every spray. That means Clint and the gang are more effective out there with every spray. They no longer have to do five or 10 missions. They can do the same with three or four now that they used to do with five or 10. And that's never been experienced before in the adulticide industry. We've also perfected an Aqua version of this, which we're using here in Princeton now. The water-based Aqua Duett has an advantage called droplet optimization technology. The droplets actually get hotter and hotter and more effective as they get further and further from the sprayer. The Aqua is carrier evaporates, but the insecticide does not. So that is, in a nutshell, what we've been doing in Princeton for adulticide. And I wanted to introduce you to that chemical and the safeties of those, and also wanted to put up this slide for you here, too. I kind of skipped by that one. The LD-50, or the lethal dose, that kills 50% of the lab rats or animals in a study that's used to test a particular chemical, the LD-50 or lethal dose is how we rate the toxicity of that chemical. The chemicals that we're using today for mosquito control have LD-50s in excess of 5,000 milligrams per kilogram. That means it would take 5,000 milligrams of an insecticide to kill half the rats in the study. That means the higher the number, the more safe, technically the more safe that chemical is, meaning there'd be more of that chemical needed to kill those rats or lab animals in the studies. Here are some common household items, LD-50, that we use every day. One of the ones I point out every year is household bleach. We wash our clothes with chemicals that are 52 times more stronger than our mosquito control chemicals that we use every day in our mosquito control efforts. So when people ask about safety of mosquito control, it's never been safer, and it's never been more effective, and it's never been better for the environment and the people that work with it. So that was what I wanted to present today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about Clark, about Princeton's mosquito control program, or any questions about mosquitoes for that matter. And if you don't have any?
This was part of the reason that you're here tonight, is I had a resident contact me about the safety of the people, and they were very concerned and, you know, somewhat convinced that we were spraying this whole humans, children, and everything else. So that was part of the reason why I kind of dispelled the fears of people might have that were out there spraying these mosquitoes.
Well, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to talk to the folks that have any questions. I'm going to leave some cards here on the table. If anybody has any questions, they'd like to give me a call, I'd be happy to answer any questions about Clark, about our chemicals, about Princeton program and history. I've been with Clark for, geez, 12 years now. I didn't know, Clint. I've been with Clark for 12 years now, and I've been a rep for Illinois now for eight. And I can tell you this, they're very effective at their work, they know what they're doing out there, they do come to workshops and they learn a lot about the mosquitoes, so it's not like we're winging it. We're using EPA-registered labels with approved products, and we're reducing the risk to the community every, every time we do so.
Well, I, for one, I haven't had, I live on a park, and I, we have a pond in our backyard, and I haven't had any problems with mosquitoes at all.
Thank the man there.
And I think it's important to point out that, you know, Q and S guys has to be licensed in order to apply this.
Absolutely.
It's a testing process, much like the farmers do their chemical application, their private application license. But in Q's, this is not true, it's got to be a commercial application license, like Crank.
Yes. And every year, I take the same test equipment. So, I mean, even though I'm providing CDU's continuing credit hours for folks in other states, in Illinois, because my license resides here, I have to, alongside Clint, take my test every three years as well.
Every three years.
Yeah, every three years.
Do you use any organo-phosphates in our program?
We could, but we don't. The reason we don't is for the, we're trying to move everybody forward. There's some other products that are less expensive, common products, that are a little less more toxic. There's also completely organic products that are $400 a gallon. It all depends on, you know, for the budget that we have here in Princeton and for the best applicators. I mean, there's folks that only want organic sprays, but they pay for them. And those are lethal, by the way. They sound like they're, they're natural, but natural doesn't always mean they're, they kill mosquitoes, for sure. Thank you for having me in.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. I think we have Braveheart Children's Advocacy Center.
Well, he, Chris, he put the mic back in the...
Absolutely.
And all we'll leave for you to do is just, when the mic comes back up, just stay remain and wire away.
I'm so sorry, my DCS is 250 stations, which I know the way there well. That is where our satellite office is, here in Princeton. My name is, sorry, my name is Constance King, and I'm from Braveheart, advocacy center. We serve five counties. We're located in Cambridge, and we have different satellite areas that we serve. Bureau is one of our counties. You know, we are funded by the state of Illinois. We are looking at what we do and trying to figure out how to make all of our ends meet so we can still provide services. If you don't know what a children's advocacy center is, speak rash. What I do is when a child comes forth and tells an adult that there has been sex abuse of any kind and whatever has happened, I'm part of the process when that ball starts to get rolling. So what we do is we make it more of a soft place to land. We make it so a child only has to tell their story one time, because before children's advocacy centers, they'd have to go from place to place, from the police officer to the counselor, to if they had a medical exam, the hospital, social worker, so on and so forth, and telling their story over and over again. And just to give you a small piece of that, one of the children that we did interview here in our satellite area, when I was explaining who we are and what we do, looked up at me, went all out in the air, and said, "You mean I'm only going to have to do this today, and then I don't have to keep telling people what happened?" I said, "Yes. When you're done here today, you don't have to do that again." We work together with police, we work together with DCFS, State Attorney's Office. We save per child from the get-go through all the way to process if they need support during court. $1,000 is spent on each child. And that is something that we do not charge for. We do everything we can, we scramble, we scrape, we beg, we write grants, we do what we can with our state funding. In our area, we're able to provide free therapy, we pay for that for the families, that's something that we fundraise for. And also, we're doing some education pieces. So we're just looking for some backing to be able to do more here in your area. To give you an example, in Bureau, we, last year, total, all of our five counties, we served 178 children. Thirty of those children were from Bureau County. 16 were from Princeton, from your city. And it breaks down into small areas pretty evenly. The year before, we served 11 children in Princeton. So that just goes to show you that it's not going away. We wish it would. We know that when we don't get reports, it just means that people aren't telling. And as more people are starting to feel comfortable coming forth, and the education is coming on in the schools, we're getting more reports and we're hearing more. So what I've come here to ask you tonight is just, as you're writing your budget for the next year, as you're thinking of anything that can be community involved, or what you can do that would really be impactful, helping us, supporting us in that manner would be very impactful. We'd love to have a real office here to be able to truly coordinate even more than what we do and to be able to provide therapy services in your area and to make that flow here for you as well. We just, we like being here, and the police officers are fantastic, state attorneys here are fantastic, everybody's wonderful to work for, with, and has the right heart, and we would just like to be able to do more. And also, as we look to the future, we want to be able to continue to keep our doors open and continue to serve. And if you have any questions?
What's your name again?
My name is Constance King. I'm the case manager and advocate at Braveheart. There's only two of us and a friend, the interviewer, who we contract out.
How big's your annual budget?
Our annual budget is $100,000 a year. And we've already spent a great deal of that on therapy and on just general services.
You come up here, you come up here personally, where do you want to...
Yes. I live in Moline, but I commute to Cambridge. So whenever there is a call, whenever there's an interview, we do whatever we can to make it work for the family, and we, and I personally drive up and do the face-to-face contact. So everything from knowing how old the child is to what things they might like to do, because getting in that process can be really long. They come in, we let them know what's going on, the child talks with the interviewer who conducts an interview, that in court is the best way to do it, so no one can say they were being led or put words in the child's mouth. And then when the child comes back to me, the parents go and talk to law enforcement, DCFS, State Attorney's Office, and find out now what. So I have to always make a plan of what we're going to do when I have that child and kind of figure that out. So that's more of our face-to-face contact. And also, for me, I'm still somewhat new. I'm learning resources here in this area and would love to build some more partnerships, because when people ask me or talk to me, I've had some families who mom lost her job, and now that dad is the one who did this, she's the breadwinner. And so she doesn't know what to do and what her resources are. So I work really hard to kind of fill in the gaps sometimes where other services aren't able to. So I try to connect them with any of the churches that help any, we have projects now where we're at. I think you guys have a, I found it on the, on the phone before, there's an, there's an agency that does several different things for families. So I try to break that gap as best I can and connect them.
How are you contacted? Police, DCS, do you have family contacts?
We have to go through either law enforcement or DCFS, because whenever something happens, it has to be hotlined first to see if it qualifies to be DCFS, if they need to bring a worker in. If what's happened, if that person isn't in a caregiver role, it's usually that the police that work with us. They're our first, they're our first...
And we're actually their satellite office at the police department.
Yes.
But what would be really nice is if they could get their own location.
Yes, because what happens also, and this doesn't sound good, but it is how it is, sometimes families have had other things that have, you know, gone wrong, or the child has seen dad or mom get in trouble with police officers, even though we love our police officers, they come in and everybody is like this. And so it's really like, I love my job, but there's a lot of work to bring people back down and to understand, the police aren't here to take you away from your... You know, it's hard to, to do those things, so that's what a satellite office would do. We're really looking at that, hoping with some funding that we can move around a little bit to make that happen. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, now we'll go to Commissioner Newman for approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on Monday, July 5th, 2016.
Motion's in second. Any corrections?
Christopher Warren.
Aye.
Christopher Fabia.
Aye.
Christopher Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to invoices, and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
The invoice tonight for public affairs in the Department of Accounts and Finances under the planning department, $5,801.04. Administration, $15,645.29. Tourism, $3,621.76. Property department, $5,658.30. General obligation, $721.88. Tax increment financing, $735. Homestead fund, $136.42. Now, Your Honor, I've reviewed these bills. I find them to be true and accurate, and will they be paid?
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or questions?
Christopher Warren.
Aye.
Christopher Fabia.
Aye.
Christopher Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Warren for Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you. I have the bills and payroll for Street Department totaling $5,808.90. Waste water collection totaling $110,776.23. Waste water people of $845.10. Cemetery of $6,977.39. And coverage expenditures of $12,178.90 for a grand total of $181,586.52. I've examined the bills, please, will they truly, legally pay them?
Second. Motion's in second. Any comments or corrections? I'll make, just to remind, under Street Department, you had, you misquoted it, $50,808.50. You said $5,000.
Christopher Warren.
Aye.
Christopher Fabia.
Aye.
Christopher Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Christopher Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the bills for public health, $50.04. For the police department, I have $166,906.98. For, excuse me, fire ambulance department, I have a total of $110,367.18. For a total of $277,274.16. I've reviewed these bills, I believe them to be true and accurate, and will they be paid?
Second. Motion's in second. Any comments, corrections?
Uh, there's just one correction for the fire department under Lucas Longcare, the $200, it is down to $50.
The other expense will go to water, waste water, they will be charged them directly.
Any other comments or corrections? Coral.
Christopher Warren.
Aye.
Christopher Fabia.
Aye.
Christopher Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
I also have the bills and payroll of the public property utility, its electric generation total of $593.
I've got two different totals on here.
Thank you.
Well, I have $593,000 for building, electric, I only got $592,000 grand total. You may get that grant.
Right, that's a lot of money.
$592,000, $595.99.
I'll get it right here.
Electric distribution of $26,762.66. Electric administration of $23,055.22. Water treatment of $21,358.8. Water distribution of $2,436.68. Water administration of $24,845.69 for a grand total of $691,121.32. I've examined these bills, I believe them to be true and legally paid them.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabia.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioners, now we'll go to regular business, and we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have resolution R-16-022, that's authorizing the financing of a turric's burial bucket and truck chassis, and a Lear VC 1500 diesel chopper with Midland State Banks. We're entering into a financial agreement with Midland State Bank for an amount not to exceed $273,000. It looks like we'll be financing it for a three-year term. I move that we approve this resolution.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments or corrections?
I'll just make a few comments really quick. So this is a three-year term with no prison payment penalty, and the, and all the local banks, and Goodland State Bank have a low interest rate with those terms at 2.05%.
Any other comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabia.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. I have resolution R-16-023, authorizing the city to enter into a client services agreement with Rule &amp; Rule Insurance. If I, I'm going to ask Rachel to comment on this, but my take on this is that our city manager went back to Rule &amp; Rule and renegotiated a contract that we have with these folks and realized the substantial savings to the city. I move that we approve this resolution, but Rachel, do you have any comments on that?
Sure. So Rule &amp; Rule is our current broker for home insurance, and they've been with us for five years. So I did talk to them recently, currently they're set up for payment through our TPA or third-party administrators, so we pay them on a per-employee basis. So this separates that out into a client services agreement, so we'll pay them directly. And so in the past, it's fluctuated monthly based on how many employees we have enrolled in our plan, and that amount was anywhere between $4,000 to $4,500 a month. This new agreement with them is a monthly rate of $2,500, so about a $2,000 savings per month. And it also includes in there a total overhaul of our human resource manual with an update to that, which haven't updated in about 10 years. And that value for just that service alone is $4,000, but it's waived and included in the contract.
And this is just excellent, excellent result, huge savings to the city, to the taxpayers. Any comments, corrections, very comments?
Second to motion.
Yeah, I was going to say a second.
Okay, motion's been seconded, any comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabia.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. I have the monthly building permit report for June. Under residential, we have 12 permits totaling $230,000. Commercial, we have two new permits for approximately $260,000. Permits through June for 2016 totaled $2,881,283 compared to a year ago where we were $3,165,235. And back in 2014, we were about $2.5 million. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman, and we'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have ordinance 0-16-010, an ordinance amendment, Princeton City Code after nine, offenses of felonious provision, Article 4, nuisance. The overview is, as drones get less expensive and more popular, the chance of them creating a nuisance increases. Home ordinance will help to enforce any nuisance, illegal activity, or liability caused by drone use. The ordinance aims to protect both public and private concerns. I would like to make a motion, we move this to a second reading.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments?
Um, yes, I have two questions for John. Number five and six, to operate any non-commercial manned aircraft within 500 feet of police notification traffic accidents, medical emergency, is that including the helipad, or is that FAA regulated?
Yeah, that one there. Yeah, five. That's non-commercial behavior, right? Yeah, that, that appears to be all that includes.
The helipad would be included in that, or that is regulated by the FAA?
Oh, the helipad, I don't know how the helipad's regulated.
Should we include the helipad in there, or would the medical emergency cover that?
I would think that medical emergency would cover it.
Okay.
It wouldn't be there otherwise.
Okay, my second question is regarding the number six, the next one down, park district building or pool facility. Should that be the whole area of the park district, not just the building? The whole park itself, land and building?
We might want to add park district property.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be.
So we can do that before the second reading.
Okay, that'll be it.
I do have a question, too. Doesn't the FAA regulate these unmanned aircraft, but wouldn't they have the jurisdiction over us?
FAA does.
Is that what I'm saying?
You said that. [laughing].
I would say the only one that's licensed right now, which is for agriculture.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm asking why do we need an ordinance when the FAA is going to enforce these as well?
My expectation would be that you're not going to see many FAA regulators around here, and if we have a problem, at least we can deal with it ourselves.
And there's drones that are specifically with cameras. A neighbor to be peeking in your window, huh?
They don't say much.
We're just basically piggybacking on the FAA's regulations.
regulations.
Would this not maybe make use of our adjudication hearing process if this ordinance is passed, and we have a violation of some kind, or is this figurative?
No, it would be, it would include the administrative hearing process, as well, the city ordinance.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Do you notice? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabia.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi.
We'll go to Commissioner Warren for permission.
Thank you, I have resolution R-16-021. It's where the Princeton Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a parade in the city of Princeton, which it best constitutes public purpose. Whereas this parade would require the temporary closure of Illinois Route 26, which is also Main Street, which the state highway to the city of Princeton, compelled to park avenue. And this is our annual resolution that we have to do in order to have the parade, but we'll move to the end of this resolution.
Second. Motion's been seconded, any comments?
Call roll. Commissioner Warren.
Hi.
Commissioner Fabia.
Hi.
Commissioner Newman.
Hi.
Mayor Querom.
Hi. We'll go to the city manager.
You don't worry, Brian.
And I've got a couple items under, we do have a vacancy on our planning commission, it's only a commission. We would ask that anybody that has interest in being considered for this seat to please fill out a, you can go to the city's website, and there is a form to be filled out, that once you submit that, we'll go to our city manager, we'll compile those, and then we'll move from there. Also like to just, Josh Ray, he's a Eagle Scout here in Princeton, and recently noticed across the street at Veterans Park, we've got six flags, a US flag, plus we've got six flags over the flagpoles, and these, the park, when it was first dedicated, was dedicated to Veterans. One of the flags that was flying was Illinois State flag, which really doesn't have anything as far as, you know, to do with dedicating the park. What we have done, at Josh's suggestion, and is the proper move, is that we have replaced Illinois State flag with the POWMIA flag, and that is currently going. So thank you to Josh for bringing that to our attention. Also, this past weekend was a very busy weekend in Princeton. Now we had Festival 56, Festival 56 is doing well, very, going along very well. Places are excellent, they've got great attendance, so thank you to all, everybody's participating in Festival 56, including volunteers. This past weekend, we had a Friday night street concert with a band from the Potadia area. We had a huge crowd that turned out, and kicked off our Z-Tour that was held on Saturday. So one of the things as far as the concert, Princeton Tourism, the Princeton Chamber of Commerce, Gary Swanson, he runs the sound system, Bureau County Fair was supplying the stage, and all the food and beverage vendors. It was a great turnout, and Gary had great time. The Z-Tour on Saturday had the biggest year, you got 701 riders. And thank you to all the volunteers at Z-Tour, and everybody for coming into town to partake in that. Any old business? Any new business? I do have one question here. In our packet was a Main Street sidewalk policy. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it.
That'll be an upcoming.
An upcoming?
Yeah. What the?
I think it's a council update.
A council update? In the case I have questions.
Yes.
About this. Number one, especially regarding the leases?
That'll be upcoming as well, we have not done that yet.
Okay. I will reserve my questions until.
You can ask your questions now, but, yeah, we don't.
In fact, what are you going to, what are you going to lease, and what we lease, city old property that in fact goes onto the tax rolls? Is that going to require a new PIN number for that leased property then?
That's one of the questions we've done.
Okay. And the other question is, if it can't exceed 50% of gross sales in alcohol, how are you going to determine that?
Okay.
I'm not against having standing on the sidewalk, and it's a great idea, but when the city starts imposing all these restrictions, it kind of takes away from having opening and inviting, inviting on the sidewalk.
Well, I think the point of the 50% is that, so some of the places that only sell alcohol, can't have people standing and sitting, you know, outside on sidewalks drinking, because we don't want to be responsible for that. So when we, I talked about the 50%, it was for food establishments that are serving alcohol, to be able to sit outside and drink on city sidewalk.
But again, how are you going to know it's 50%?
Well, for instance, most of the restaurants probably serve, you know, more than 50%, but we have to figure out how we're going to enforce that. How do you say, if there's a place that only serves alcohol, they're not serving food, so they.
I understand, sorry.